Good afternoon. It is 1:30. We will call to order the special meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board of Directors. I'd ask everyone to, you know, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Aronio.
Here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Director Borchardt.
Here.
Thank you. I also see Andy Waters in the audience. I don't see any other alternates back there from here. Agenda review, I gather with just two items on the agenda. There are no changes?
No changes.
All right. Public comments. This is an opportunity for public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board on a matter not otherwise on today's agenda, please step forward and address the board. Seeing none, we'll move on then to board member comments. Director Aronio.
None.
Director Craven?
None.
None, Chair.
Thank you. Let's move on then to agenda item number one.
Good afternoon. Chair West, members of the board. For the record, I'm Kim Lo, Fox Canyon GMA staff. So this item is regarding a comment letter from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District on the preliminary draft GSP for the East Los Poses Valley Basin. The letter was received in response to the public comment period that your board opened on January 3rd and closed on April 3rd. The letter is one of about 28 comment letters that we received. The comment letters were posted to the agency website at that time and identified to you the letters that were received at the April 25th board meeting. Due to discuss the letters, the general topics and themes of the 28 letters at your May 23rd board meeting and that's comments have been generally are being worked into the discussions that we've had and they've produced presented here. However, the next board item for your board's consideration is entering into an agreement with United Water Conservation District and Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. And Cuyahoga's in their agreement specifically called out and referenced their aquifer storage and recovery program, ASR, as well as their comment letter on the preliminary draft GSP and in fact made it a part and attachment to the agreement. Because Cuyahoga's comment letter is specifically part of the agreement that staff is asking your board to consider approving the next item, we thought it was appropriate to ask Cuyahoga to come and present their concerns and comments to your board ahead of considering that agreement. And at this point in time, I, oh, well, I was expecting Susan Mulligan to be presenting comments, but I guess, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Morris. I'm an attorney at Best Bestin Krieger and I'm representing Cuyahoga. It looks like you are going to start hearing a lot from the California Water Bar. I see a few of us in the room now. But I wanted to give you a little bit of information about Cuyahoga's and about the agreement that's before you. So just to step back and talk a little bit about the scope of what I'm going to be providing information on today, it's really limited to the agreement for modeling that we worked with your staff on drafting and that you are now considering. And the reason that the modeling agreement that we're, you're considering references the Cuyahoga's April 2nd comment letter is really just not to incorporate the comment letter but into the modeling, but it's really has to do with the fact that the model is a tool. And the outcome of the model, modeling results will depend on the inputs. And Cuyahoga's doesn't agree currently with the inputs that are going to be put in by your consultants. And so it's really an effort to just sort of allow collaboration and the use of the model, but just to be clear that Cuyahoga's doesn't agree with the inputs that are likely to go into the model based on the draft comment letter. So that's really the scope of what I'm here to talk about today. And I want to be clear that the issue isn't with the model. It really is just the differing difference of opinion about the correct inputs in the model. And I'll describe some of that as I walk through this very briefly. Before I talk about the issue today, I wanted to give a little bit of history and background. Because Cuyahoga's has limited redundancy in its system and because its infrastructure crosses many active seismic areas, it undertook studies in the 80s and the 90s to explore the feasibility of storing imported water in the groundwater basin for use during times of shortages and emergencies or other outages. These studies evaluated specifically the feasibility of an ASR program in the East Los Poses Basin. In 1993, the GMA adopted Resolution 1993-2, which acknowledged the need to protect water supply, protect the county in water supply emergencies and to protect investments to develop storage facilities. In February of 1994, the GMA approved Cuyahoga's installing 20 ASR wells and storing up to 300,000 acre feet in the East Los Poses Basin. In reliance on the GMA approvals and resolutions, Cuyahoga's invested $180 million to build 18 ASR wells and the necessary infrastructure to store imported water and extract it during these times of emergency or water unavailability. Cuyahoga's has at all times complied with the GMA approvals. From 2007 to 2011, Cuyahoga's withdrew previously stored water from the ASR wells. In this process, water levels in the area dropped between 40 and 100 feet. Cuyahoga's, based on this experience, went beyond requirements of the GMA approval and at a cost of $53.9 million terminated a contract with the Metropolitan Water District of California that would allow WD to require Cuyahoga's to make withdrawals during certain times. Now, Cuyahoga's is committed to only using the ASR in times of importer, imported water storage unavailability through emergencies or through scheduled outages. And let me turn now back to the issue of today. 660,000 people rely on Cuyahoga's for three quarters of their water supply. At a cost of approximately $30 million, Cuyahoga's has stored 18,000 acre feet in the East Los Poses Basin and 25,000 acre feet in the West Los Poses Basin. The concern and the reason why we raised in the comment letter is that the draft GSP does not consider Cuyahoga's, Cuyahoga's storage or implementation of the ASR. Specifically, Cuyahoga's is concerned that the draft GSP will potentially not allow for ASR operation when it may be necessary in the future. Let me explain. When water's being stored in the basin, groundwater levels stop declining or rise. When water is being pumped from the ASR water, from the ASR wells, water levels decline because the stored water, which would not occur naturally, is being removed. The draft GSP doesn't acknowledge or account for this activity. So if an emergency did occur and the ASR needed to be operated, it's possible that the GSP, once adopted and if not changed throughout this process, would not allow the ASR to operate because of the thresholds and sustainability goal in the GSP. Additionally, it's our belief that the draft GSP misinterpreted data and relied on these interpretations and in making conclusions. These are outlined in detail and as I mentioned before, I'm a water rights lawyer, so I'm not going to be able to answer very technical questions and this is probably not the right venue, but they are detailed and I'll just give you two examples. One is that the rising groundwater levels that are documented in the draft GSP in the West Los Poses Basin, we believe were caused by Cuyahoga's in lieu storage activities, but in the GSP, they were accounted for as wet period responses. And both in the East and West Los Poses Basins, it's our belief that those basins do not respond to dry-wet year patterns and because of the storage activity, the GSP is accounting for recovery where there has been none. And in fact, we believe there's been a chronic lowering in these basins. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to sort of explain why we're here today and why we were invited in the context of the modeling agreement and to provide just a bit of detail. We would be happy to work with your technical staff on incorporating or working through these very technical comments in the future. Thank you.
Stephanie, I don't see anything in the modeling agreement that incorporates ASR into anything, into any of the anticipated modeling runs or anything else. What am I overlooking?
It's just a reference in the recitals. Again, it's for the limited purpose, in our opinion, to document that we don't necessarily agree with the inputs into the modeling run and therefore we, even though it's our model and we developed it, we may not agree with the results, but again, not because of the model.
Then run your own simulations and bring them back.
And we are happy to and we have, and we are just providing this information because we're allowing you to use our model in some instances for a limited basis and no cost to help prepare the GSP.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Robert?
I have a couple for you. The chairman touched on it and I guess my fundamental question comes with, why not run the model with the inputs as being provided to you and then provide comment back when the model results come out saying that we, as the holders of the model, do not support this because of, and then also bring it forward at that time? It seems you might be putting the cart before the horse here a little bit and trying to get a preferential treatment or a consideration.
It's not preferential, in my opinion. It's a legal issue. We want to be on the record in the beginning because we are allowing you to use our model that we don't necessarily agree with your inputs. It doesn't mean that you agree with our, with our interpretation either. It's simply to just state our position. That's why it's in the whereas clause and you will look through the rest of the agreement does not reference it.
The second, okay, thank you for that. The second question I have for you is that Cuyahoga's been instrumental in the formation of the Los Poses Basin Users Group and you've used that in the past as your primary highway in order to build consensus from the stakeholders that are around the area there. Why not work through that group and have that group supported such as you did when you participated in the LPUG plan?
So you're really going beyond the scope of what I'm here to discuss. I think Cuyahoga's continues to engage in that group and is looking for the ASR to be, to look through that group, to see how it can be operated and work with those local users. But the issue here is not about that. The issue is really the concern that by not even acknowledging that this is an operation or acknowledging that this is stored water that has been put there by an investment by Cuyahoga's in the draft GSP, you are missing the whole picture and it looks like the hydrology is completely different than it might be because you are not accounting for those storages or in lieu.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
If the goal today is to build the legal record, I certainly understand, you know, what, what you're trying to do there. You want to make sure early in the process you establish that, you know, that this is an issue that you brought up and that one that we need to consider. So I'm fine with that and, and my, my question, I think for staff and to the extent that you want to weigh in or anybody else, it seems to me that the crux of the issue is a statement that says water levels were going up because of wet years or wet periods or whatever. And Cuyahoga's would like that to be water was going up because of water being injected in, being imported in by, by Cuyahoga's. And so I'm curious if that's really the rub. And then is the other half of that, when the water was put in by Cuyahoga's and the water levels did go up, would those water levels have stayed high without pumping or would was, would those water levels have gone down because of natural seepage or something else? So that strikes me as the two fundamental issues. And then from that, do you have, you have either a stronger or weaker case in terms of ASR and, and the withdrawals? So I'm just curious, does that seem like what the fundamental issue is here? I'm going to ask Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
And do you agree that's the fundamental issue?
I would agree that's one of the issues and I think there are several that are outlined in the comment letter. But again, this is not, the intent of referencing our comment letter in the agreement for modeling is not to stake out a legal position. It's rather just to be clear about what we think the modeling results may show and that we don't, we may not agree with them.
Sure, yeah. You're, you're suggesting different, different inputs ought to be there instead, right? And then you're trying to establish that early in the process, both legally and procedurally, I guess is be another way to say it, right? Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Any questions from the, questions or comments from the public? Peter?
Thank you, Chair West. I don't know if the letter from Mr. Alajem got to everybody, but so that we have a clear record, I have, it did? Okay, I would, I'm giving five to the clerk and I'm assuming that because I want to make sure we have a very clean administrative record, so I'd ask that these be posted on the, on the website. We've had some issues with staff relative to that in the past. And I feel a bit vindicated frankly, because I've been talking about this for the better part of a year to your board and I have, for lack of a better term, been told that I don't know what I'm talking about, but I think it's now coming to the fore. And frankly, I think it needs to be directly hit and dealt with head-on. And while I appreciate the limitation supervisor benefit that you described in terms of the issue, it is far deeper than that and it's fundamental to this process and, and the entire administrative record as to how this moves forward. And, and I, and I say that to you, having in mind that I know that one of your themes always is not having the process opaque, having it transparent and fully knowledgeable to everybody and all the bits and pieces of how they fit together known. So with, with your indulgence, I want to make a couple of historic comments and then to the specific one. The letter that we're talking about was issued April of 2018 and while it may have been among many posted, I didn't see it and it certainly was not highlighted nor brought promptly to the attention of the stakeholders. And it, it has resulted, now that it's come to the fore, in a number of interesting events, including at the most recent LPUG meeting where Mr. Bondi didn't want to talk about it and Ms. Mulligan didn't want to talk about it because of the underlying truth, which I'll discuss to you in a, in a moment. The record is unambiguous apropos of Director Aronio's comments, that at the inception of LPUG, it was created effectively by Cuyahoga's. It was authorized by a document signed by Jeff Pratt as your executive director. Mr. Bondi was paid by Cuyahoga's to be involved and at that time and through the whole process, the Nassimin Firm was Water Rights Litigation Council for Cuyahoga's. There's just no question about that. Now, nobody knew all those bits and pieces until last year, when I started pressing Cuyahoga's a little bit to find out what was going on because these issues were very clear to our client, our group, as we saw this one coming. Because the Nassimin Firm has done this one in other jurisdictions and has tried the play of in lieu to override fundamental water rights. And every stakeholder involved in FCGMA needs to understand that at the core of this issue, the core of this issue is the contention by Cuyahoga's that it owns water rights in the Los Poses Basin and that when you look at the basin and you add up the water, their contention is, we're the last in, therefore we're on top. And therefore the water rights owners, the ag people are down here and the top level is Cuyahoga's through its failed ASR and they have no data to show that it ever succeeded and that therefore they own this top elevation and now they monetize it. Now they say to you as the land, water, as the landowner, well, you have to pay us for this water and it's a monetization event. And that's the truth of all of this. And as I said, the Nassimin Firm has done this before. They've tried and they weren't successful and they're trying it here now. And I'll tell you now what I'm going to tell you in a second. You all hired the Nassimin Firm to represent you in the water rights adjudication litigation. You folks hired them. They resigned from Cuyahoga's and you folks hired them. And in their very first pleading, and I wrote you this letter and I asked this be agendized so the stakeholders could have an understanding and you could discuss this, they wrote on behalf of you five that there are no water rights in the Los Poses Basin. They have been superseded by the regulatory and administrative processes of FCGMA. They put it in black and white. I gave you that in a letter. It's unambiguous. You hired Cuyahoga's Water Rights Litigation Council to assert that position in this body and you're paying them from these people's money to fight their water rights. You, Director Borchardt, as I read the records, suggested and approved or proposed Mr. Bondi be the agricultural representative on the tag. That's how I read the minutes. Out of LPUG, but nobody told you that he was the secret water rights counsel for Cuyahoga's litigation expert on these various issues. And I have all that in writing. So the tag rep for these folks in this room has been the Nassimin Firm's Water Rights Litigation Council, now your litigation council, now working for Cuyahoga's unambiguously. So we have before you the question of what are you going to do with Cuyahoga's? Because Cuyahoga's is now coming in with a different lawyer saying, well, we want to run all the data. We don't agree with the inputs. And you want that model by these folks who are taking that position to be relied on. Now, models are data in, data out. Models are algorithms. Models are a whole lot of things. And you have as one of the key models that you're suggesting be used in this process being presented by a litigant in the water rights dispute that is taking a position that is one contrary to what I've heard from every one of you. Every one of you have repeatedly said, nothing we're doing is taking away water rights. We are not taking away people's water rights. I've heard that. I have it on videotape. That's not the position the Nassimin's firm's taking on your, on your behalf in litigation. And now the Cuyahoga's folks who are taking that position that water rights are not with the landowners and we control them in this in lieu environment, you want them to be the honest broker around modeling and data in and data out and the algorithms. And it seems to me that if you want anybody to believe any of this, that can't happen. That can't happen. They're not honest brokers. They are interested players in this process. And what is particularly troubling to me is that if you look at their letter, they're suggesting that there have been agreements that have substantiated these in lieu rights that they're now seeking to impose. And they're not seeking to just impose them on the mutuals who they claim to have agreements on. They're seeking to impose them, and it's unambiguous in the litigation, they're seeking to impose them on every single landowner in the Los Poses Basin, every single one. They're taking the position, if we provided you water.
Excuse me, Peter. We've gone way far afield from the point here. The question is, what should or should not be included in the modeling? We're not going to litigate, you know, the cases that are pending here and it's a waste of our time. This board's not going to do it. The only, the only thing on this agenda item is, and the, and the item that Ms. Morris addressed, is what elements should be or should not be within the modeling? If you would please limit your comments to that, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. The answer is you can't use the Cuyahoga's modeling. It is flawed and subject to attack and cannot be relied upon. They're not honest brokers. So the fundamental bottom line is that you can't use the Cuyahoga's modeling because they're going to use, they're using it in the litigation and they already have. And so now you're going to be trying as, if you truly are the honest stakeholders, to address a number of competing interests and try to get to a place that either is legally justifiable or appropriate in terms of honest brokering to stakeholders. You can't use their modeling. It places the entire process at risk and it can't be honestly relied on. So the bottom line is you can't use Cuyahoga's. That's the beginning and end of it. You can't salvage the contract and you can't salvage it. It's opaque.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Russ McGlaughlin. I'm a water attorney with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek. My firm represents a number of landowners and frankly, I'm very new to this process. You know my partner, Rob Saperstein, very well for his work with your agency for years. And it is a current, it is apparent to me that the Los Poses Basin is becoming the, the new home of the water bar. Best Bestin Krieger here, you all have Nassimin, my firm, the Downey brand authored the letter you have today. Frankly, not to mention Price Postale and Parma and Ferguson Case Law Firm. These are all friends of mine, people I respect, people that I think have a square mind on their solar shoulders. We ought to be able to get together and work things out collaboratively. But that's the key, is that it has to be a collaborative effort. I agree with many of the legal principles that are set forth in the Downey brand letter and those do, do need to be appreciated and considered, the fact that there are water rights in, in this. I, I don't know, the, the statement that Peter made is accurate. There was a kind of head scratching comment and pleading from the Nassimin Firm about water rights and the relationship to, to your agency. I don't put that much stock on it because it was just one pleading. There are water rights in the basin. Sigma is very clear that it has to be coordinated with water rights, but I believe we can do that in a collaborative framework. I'm not opposed to, to working with Cuyahoga's. They have put water in the basin. In the parlance of water law, we refer that, refer to that as developed water, but there are limitations on developed water as the Downey brand letter, David Alajem's letter notes, which that it can't cause injury to existing users of native water right, not exclusively, but paramountly the overlying landowners as well. So to the extent that they're not injurious or holding, if you will, the basin hostage, there is a process for developed water, aquifer storage and recovery, and it's an important tool in the tool chest, of course, for effective water management. But I don't have anything specific to say about your retention of Cuyahoga's, but I urge you to open a collaborative process that invites technical experts from the Water Rights Coalition and the Downey brand firm, who we bring to the table, and others to work with your experts, with Cuyahoga's experts, to see if we can't come to with CAGUS's experts, to see if we can't come to consensus on technical grounds and also create a process for principals in the legal community, see if we can come to consensus over time on some of the policy issues. Because while we have an adjudication in its burgeoning phases, ultimately, if you look at the history of groundwater adjudications across the state, the 20-some that have been done to date, most of them ultimately settle. The relative question is, how long are we going to hit our head into the wall and bloody it up and pay lawyers until we find common ground and find some consensus? So, I encourage you to be open to that process. I'm not in any way alluding that you have not been. I'm very new to this, to this board and to this agency, but I encourage you to open a collaborative, both technical and policy processes, you move this process forward.
Russ, just one comment. We have a technical advisory group. It is made up of engineers and hydrologists. Their meetings are open, to the extent that any stakeholders or contractors to stakeholders want to appear and participate, happy to take the input. And before any technical information comes to us, it goes to them.
I appreciate that. It's very consistent. I, I did understand that. It's very consistent with a lot of other thoughtful groundwater sustainable planning efforts have. I do encourage you to, in those models, to, to, and if there is a, if there are differences of opinion, of inputs on calibration, or, you know, how you construct the models, that you hear that, that you get forethought through that advisory committee, obviously, first and then to your board. I trust you will. I compliment you for that. I encourage that open collaborative process going forward.
Thank you. One, one second, Stephanie. Anyone else? John?
I'm John Grether. I'm a grower in the West Las Poses. I'm also a director of Zone Mutual, which pumps water from the East Las Poses. I've been a member of the steering committee of the Las Poses Users Group for six or eight years, for quite a long time. I'm, I'm very confused by the, the tack that this process has taken in the last week or so. The tone of Susan Mulligan's letter that was referenced from April was never the tone that CAGUS took at any of the LPUG meetings. There's a very hard edge to it as to demanding CAGUS's rights to water in the Las Poses Valley, almost to suggesting that it's to the exclusion or primary to the rights of the overlying property owners. As Mr. McLaughlin has just explained, there's an effort to reach a consensus among the various parties in the adjudication process. Hopefully, we can get there. But I want to say this. I am concerned that you, you are embarking on a modeling effort by CAGUS at a time when their attorney has said that they disagree with the inputs. I question how well they can perform and whether that modeling effort would be tainted by the letter that Ms. Mulligan wrote and by their own comments right now, saying that they disagree with the process. Thank you.
Thank you. John, just to comment if I may. Part of, before anything gets modeled, one of the, one of the meetings, I think it was a couple, two meetings ago, I know you were here. Part of the increased expense that was authorized this board was for separate peer review of the models to be accomplished before, ideally, before anything is run. DUDAC, I guess, is going to define the elements that they want modeled. And I think Stephanie is here to tell us that she disagrees with what they're likely to, to recommend, but we're relying on DUDAC to tell us, you know, I guess, to determine what will be modeled, and then this process will be open for a comment. But in terms of the integrity of the data, we're checking it beforehand with a peer review of the structure of the model, and obviously, we'll analyze the data and any competing data that comes out.
Well said. I, I understand that. My concern is also that Ms. Mulligan's letter was accompanied by quite a number of pages of comments that challenged many, many things that DUDAC had said in the report, which is entirely their right to do that. Those comments have not been reviewed by other parties. By Zone has a hydrologist who has not weighed in on those comments. Zone's hydrologist submitted comments, but prior to seeing any of those comments by CAGUS. So, this is going to be a convoluted process if we have to continue to repeat the hydrologists and the tag representatives and all the various parties. I, I just am very concerned that CAGUS's participation at this, after their statements, have the possibility of really exacerbating the discussion going forward.
Thank you.
Board members, my name is Dan Rosenthal from the Las, the Las Poses Valley Water Rights Coalition. I have just a few brief comments. Number one is that the GMA represents all the stakeholders in the basin, and I think that they're charged with the duty to be fair and to be unbiased and take information from all sides and weigh it before making a decision. Number two, CAGUS has never really proved the water. They've never proved out the water that they put in the basin. We've asked them for that data, for injection logs, meter readings, anything that would verify the water going actually in the basin, and they've provided absolutely none of it. Everybody knows that this project was in jeopardy years ago and has been fraught with technical and assumptive problems from day one. Number three, why should this board, why should this county consider paying for a study by an adversarial party, not only in the litigation, but adversarial to the other rights of the wat, water rights holders in the basin? It would be like our asking you as a coalition to pay for our hydrologist. They need to pay for their own studies to support their own position. That's normally how this would be done. And lastly, the issue that they're presenting is basically at the core of the adjudication that's currently in the courts. And this board should not be taking a position until that adjudication has a chance to actually do the job of assessing the validity or invalidity of their position. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, board. Andy Waters, grower, Las Poses Basin. I first spoke to this board about the SR field roughly 15 years ago on this problem. So, it's been on the top of my mind for a long time. I think we're discussing item number one, but we're going between item number two and item number one. A little confused about that. I think the CAGUS comment letter was, was rushed based on the DUDAC's asking for comments in a shortened period of time. So, if it came off that it was, if it came off wrong, that was not the intention of, of CAGUS, in my opinion. As, as far as the study goes, I think that CAGUS has been at the forefront of honesty and, and trying to prove that this, whatever their methodology for this failed well field at the beginning, it was, they're trying to make it work for, for their, for their people. I just want, I just wanted to share those comments that, that I think there's been a good faith effort from, from the, from the pumpers in the area to work together on this, and I don't want to see it blow up at the, at last minute without your board's help. So...
Excuse me. You introduce yourself as a, as a grower. You're also on the CAGUS board.
I'm also on the CAGUS board as a member. I'm also on the District One Advisory Council. I'm also on the Thermo Mutual Water Company Board. I'm also on the Burrwood Board. I've been involved in this for a long time, and I, I just don't like to see the newcomers like Peter Goldenring come in and, and, you know, try to, to try to break down what we've done. I agree. I don't agree. I, I, I like their questions that they're asking about the water rights. Those are the questions that I asked when I first spoke in front of this board about those questions, and I think they need to be answered.
I just wanted to clarify that whether, I didn't know whether you were still on the CAGUS board or not, and I wanted to make sure I knew that.
Yeah, I think it's today. Those are my comments. I just, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else?
I'm Esper Peterson, and a grower, and a newcomer. A lot of old comers around here. I was just reading an article from 2013 in Associated Press, if you give me a moment to read this. "The Las Poses Basin Aquifer and Recovery Project About 50 Miles Northwest of Los Angeles Illustrates the Risk of What's Known as Groundwater Banking: Warehousing Water Below Ground in Aquifers to Pump Out During Dry Spells. Imagine a Bathtub Beneath the Earth. If Geological Conditions Are Right, Water Can Be Added to Such a Basement Supplementing Natural, Supplementing Naturally Occurring Groundwater Creating a Reserve. But at the Las Poses, water instead disappeared. The ground, the project now owned by wholesaler CAGUS Municipal Water District in Ventura County promised to raise local groundwater levels 300 feet, yet groundwater levels dropped steeply when the system went into operation, potentially threatening supplies for nearby residents, ranches, and businesses that also draw water from the basin. The teacup appears to have a leak in it."
Mm-hmm.
"Mr. Aranio, General Manager, CAGUS Mutual Water System, who buys water from them, said, 'You know, the cost estimated in 1995 at $47 million has gradually tripled, around $150 million. More than $56 million in long-term debt. That whole ASR well field is a boondoggle, doesn't work. I would not, in my business, hire somebody to figure out how much water we have after they had done something like that. Got to be somebody better out there. Got to be something we can all agree on and come together. Either it is or it isn't. It does or it doesn't. It will or it won't. But CAGUS is not the one to do that.'" Thank you.
Anyone else? Stephanie, did you have a comment you wanted to make? No? Okay. Question, further questions, Robert?
I don't have any questions. I have some statements, though.
Okay.
I, I admit that comment about the teacup has a leak, that was my comment. And if there's one thing that's lived on in lore and legend throughout the internet, it was that one. I don't know why, but what, what I did find out afterwards, and I'll put it out here, and I hope it grabs some traction, I was mistaken. I met with CAGUS and reviewed the data, then they showed it to me. That water was pumped out. That water was pumped out by everyone around in that area there. That benefited from those upper, those higher pumping levels. And so, I was mistaken for that, but that, that comment does live. And we all have things we wish we can take back and do again, and that was one of them. Thinking about this, though, and what's before us right now and whereabouts we are with this. One, for me, I think the model is valid. I think there's enough ways for us to put peer review, list of assumptions, find out what the results are, and discuss those, and put your comments forward about why you don't believe it, and let's debate that. But I think the model does have the potential to be an impartial and use, in this case, in order to identify some things about that basin that we need to know about. Two, I think CAGUS should run the model exactly the way they're directed and the way they're going to be paid for from Downey brand. And if they don't agree with it, then come back with why you don't agree with it and present your own data as to why you think it's flawed, and let's debate that. That is the process and what it should be. I recognize this letter from April 2, 2018, as what it is. It's a comment letter on the draft GSP. We received many of them. I couldn't read through all of them that we got, but I recognize it is for what it was and how contentious it was that we even went out with the preliminary GSP and a lot of the comments we got back. So, I'm willing to take it at face value for what that was and where we were in the process at that time and give a, not believe that it was contentious or the way it was believed to be at this point in time. One thing I want to also point out about that LPUG meeting on Wednesday, that, Peter, you stated that Susan did not want to comment about. Susan wasn't there. She was on vacation. And that's unfair for you to say that she wouldn't comment on something when she wasn't in the room and given the opportunity. So, I'm going to call you on that one again. What else?
It was Brian. I apologize. Robert, it was Brian.
Thank you, and I accept that.
It was Brian, as a review.
I think we want you on, to hear you on that one, if you're going to get up and, okay.
I missed, well, I need to make the record clear with Mr. Bondi's.
And that's my comments at the, oh, I, I still think that CAGUS should reach out to the LPUG and stakeholder group and work with that group. The, the group is legitimate in its intentions and who the people are in there and the ideas that we've wrestled with in order to get to this point in time. You have a good mix of people there that are genuine in what they're trying to accomplish. And I encourage you to vest more of an effort in there in order to address these issues and have the discussion at that level, and then bring that group along with you when the findings are, whatever we, they happen to come up with. Thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Anything further from the board?
I, I, I think the discussion here today highlights a belief I've had all along, that in the long run, the, the agency that's charged with monitoring and regulating the groundwater of Ventura County ought to have its own independent modeling ability. And in the long run, that should be the case. From the time that I've gotten here, everybody has really pushed the collaborative effort with United and CAGUS, and let's use their models, and why should we repeat what they have to do, et cetera. And, and back in the day when people weren't as focused on, on this, on the, the hard issues of the, of the hard decisions that are going to be coming forward. But I think now you actually start to see it. When push comes to shove, what everybody would like to have is that be some, somebody independent. So, in the long run, that's where we ought to go. But to try to stop and change horses now, at this point in time, would only be justified if you could say, hey, I really don't have confidence that we could get there. And the question I have, because we're only on item one here right now, which is just to receive, but I'll, I'll, I'll address that when we get to item two. Can we trust United and CAGUS to go forward, given where we are at this point in time? This does highlight, and I will become a stronger advocate for an independent, and there will be some cost involved, but we're paying somebody else to do this anyway. Better to do it internally and have confidence that it's objectively done. And I think one thing people would say about our staff is that they, they genuinely are in good faith trying to represent the general public as, as they're going forward. Nobody's sort of accusing them of, of bias. They may accuse them of a lot of other things, but I haven't certainly seen, seen that side of it yet. Thank you.
Anything further from the board? This is a, receive a presentation. We've done that. Let's move on then to item number two.
Chair West, members of the board. For the record again, Kim Lo, Ochs Canyon GMA staff.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
So, as, as you know, both United and CAGUS have developed numerical groundwater flow models. United's model covers the Oxnard Sub Basin, the Pleasant Valley Basin, the West Las Poses Management Area of the Las Poses Valley Basin, and then other areas outside the agency's jurisdiction. And the CAGUS model covers the East Las Poses Management Area of the Las Poses Basin. Both United and CAGUS's modeling teams coordinated with each other to make sure that the models, the flow into and out of the models in the basin's domains where the domains are contiguous, basically where they meet up and there might be flow in between, to make sure that the flow in, out of one model, out of one model is what the flow is in. And that was something, we got a lot of comments about preliminary draft because the models weren't complete yet and the flows didn't match up yet. That's, was a, an artifact of the time, and is not the case in the completed models. The modeling teams presented, were participating, presented in multiple tag meetings, and in fact, conducted day-long technical workshops for the tag and DUDAC and staff and stakeholders, these were public since they were Brown Act meetings. And they published technical documentation of the models. And as you know, the, the plan is for the GSPs to rely on the models for the estimate of the sustainable, future sustainable yield. And I should go back and say that, that staff... And I should go back and say that staff, through the development of models, it's been a very, both United and Cuyagus were very transparent about their model development. They've been very collaborative and very, had lots of technical meetings with the tag and staff and DUDAC, our consultant. So the sustainable yield estimates will be based on simulations of future condition scenarios, and I think that's where the disagreement that we talked about in the first item is, DUDAC is preparing the future scenario model input based on your board direction of sustainable goals, stakeholder input and comments, the tag review and comments, and staff input. So they're developing that model input. Oh, and DUDAC is conducting the peer review of the models, principally to quantify uncertainty, but also to make sure the models are working the way they are supposed to. And both Cuyagus and United have given them the actual source code. So they have the actual code for the model to run it, for the purpose of the peer review. So there's nothing, they are under the hood looking at it. So there's nothing hidden under there that they're withholding in that regard. But both Cuyagus and United requested to enter into modeling agreements with the agency. And the agreements include a scope of work, fees for compensation. Both United and Cuyagus requested that they compensate for work that essentially they wouldn't be doing anyway for the purposes they built the model. Some of it overlaps. There are specific limitations built into both agreements and indemnifications. And again, United and Cuyagus, they'll run the models based on the input that the agency gives them, and then will provide the model output that comes out based on the agency's input. I'll run through some of the pertinent items in each of the agreements. And there was a more recent version of the United agreement that you should have, it was outside on the table, then was in the board packet. And Cuyagus also identified a couple typos that need to be cleaned up non-substantive in their agreement, which we'll do if you should choose to proceed with it. So the scope of work in the United agreement was developed by DUDAC, and then United estimated their costs for the additional work. And again, it would be for the work that was beyond what they would have done anyway. The term is effective through March 31. That's when, after which, we expect all the modeling work needs to be done. Frankly, the modeling work needs to be, it's already, DUDAC and the modeling teams have been talking quite a lot about the details and technical aspects of providing the input and what output is needed. But in order to start running the scenarios, we need to move forward with those pretty soon to keep with our schedule, which is to run them in the next few months and have the modeling portion of the work wrapped up by December. So United, in section five, performance, calls out that they're going to run our input, they're going to hand us our output back, but they're not going to take ownership. It doesn't mean that they agree with what they're, we're asking them to do, and they're providing the results as is. They also call out that if there's any court proceedings that they have to, their staff have to participate in, or work that they have to do in response to a court proceeding. Originally, they had called out one and a half times the scheduled hourly rate. Bob Seemack, their assistant general manager, informed me late yesterday that United has agreed to remove that, just charge their straight cost, but we don't have that updated agreement yet. But that's, my understanding is their intent. They also have some limitations on the use of the work product. It's really basically for the purpose of the GSP, and they're restricting use in any litigation or regulatory proceeding other than the GSP work, except where mandated under court order. And so that, those are basically the terms that are, might be, there's a lot of typical agreement terms in there, but those are some of the terms that I thought would be important for your board to consider. After no questions on that, I'll move to the Cuyagus agreement.
I've got one question.
Sure.
And that is, where do we stand, I mean, I understand, except where mandated under court order. What about the Freedom of Information Act, the Freedom of Information Act request for modeling results and modeling information? Is that, that's not going to be a court order, but is this agency going to follow the state law on Freedom of Information Act? Or are we going to require somebody go to get a court order before we comply with Freedom of Information Act request?
I'll defer to agency counsel.
Well, this provision, as I read it, does not address the scenario that you're raising. This is strictly with regard to litigation and requests for use of the modeling data in that litigation. The Public Records Act request for the modeling information would be subject to the laws that govern those requests. So it would not be limited by this agreement, in other words.
It would not be nullified by this agreement?
Correct.
Right. So the parties entering into this agreement realize that if we get a Freedom of Information Act request, we would have to comply with that?
Right. And one aspect of the Public Records Act is that an agency receiving a request has the ability to consult with another agency that may be interested in the response of the request. And so the way I would interpret this is that if the agency were to receive such a request, that we would consult with United before releasing that information. But I don't read it as requiring us, in violation of the Public Records Act, to...
But we would consult with United, but we would still, in the appropriate way and at the appropriate time, comply with the Freedom of Information Act request.
Correct. Correct. And one way in which we would do that, or I would propose us doing that, is we would leave it to United to object to the release of the information, if it's their data that they're concerned about.
Thank you.
And I might add, if I would, that it's our intent to, and both agencies know this, that we would include the input and output data in, as appendices to the GSP. And Sigma, under the Sigma regulations, Department of Water Resources reserves the ability, you have to produce the model code to the state if they should ask for it, if you're relying on it in a groundwater sustainability plan. And both United and Cuyagus are aware of that statutory requirement. So moving on to the Cuyagus agreement, and so they had rather long recitals, and this is an excerpt that are relevant to the earlier discussion. They call out and recognize that they own the ASR project and operate that in the, in Las Poses Valley, in East Las Poses Valley. And they also reference the April 2 comment letter. And then they say that they're willing to cooperate with us to run the model with our inputs, but they wanted to highlight their disagreement with that in terms of the ASR. It's called out in the scope of services that they would do that, this calls back in, and that they're limiting their services to, pretty much essentially what United said too. We'll take your model input, we'll run it, and we'll provide you the results. And the term is the same. We requested the same term through March 31. For fees, they structured it a little bit differently. They said for each, they would run six simulations or scenarios, and then any more than that they would run, it would cost a lump sum $5,000. They're using an outside consultant for the modeling, and a specific modeling consultant we're, United's doing in-house. DUDAC believes that there could be up to 10 simulations or scenarios run, and therefore we're estimating additional $20,000 for additional scenarios. So again, Cuyagus indicates that they don't endorse the results necessarily. They again acknowledge their letter, their April comment letter, under the general provisions. And then similar United, they say this agreement doesn't mean that we necessarily agree with the input or output. Crud, I think it froze up. Whoop, maybe that was my, oh, no, that's his cursor. There we go. And they have a similar clause to United. If they have to do work, if they incur costs due to any court orders, then they want to be reimbursed for it at their, at their cost. Thank you. And again, they're saying they have no warranty, they're providing the results as is. So that's pretty much an overview of the pertinent sections of the Cuyagus agreement. Because modeling, models didn't exist, and the agency wasn't modeling, and then the models got built through this process, and now we're fairly well, we're pretty invested in using them for the GSPs. However, the modeling costs are not part of the existing budget, fiscal year 18, 19 budget. So under number one, we're asking that you consider authorizing the executive officer enter into an agreement with United to do the modeling for the agency. And number two, similarly, consider authorizing the executive officer enter the agreement with Cuyagus to do the modeling there. And then number three is to authorize an additional $80,238, there's a typo in the board lards, it's $239, so it was off a dollar, budget for the groundwater modeling that we'll have to compensate United and Cuyagus if we move forward with it.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions from the board?
You've heard the comments about whether we can trust these agencies, particularly Cuyagus, now that there's potential litigation out there. From staff's perspective, anybody on staff, answer this, do you feel like we have enough checks and safeguards that we can have relatively good confidence in the model?
Yes, I don't have concern about the confidence in model, I think, in the model. I think our differences are in the model input. But like I say, DUDAC, we've had a lot of technical meetings, tags, had review, DUDAC's doing the peer review, they have the actual code of the model, and so I'm not concerned about that.
Thank you.
Anything in the agreement with either United or Cuyagus that restricts the ability of the agency or DUDAC to define the input?
No.
Any other questions? Questions or comments from the public?
Can you put up the recitals for me? I don't know how to do that. Thanks.
Mr. Golden, he's asking me to go back to the...
I need help.
...recitals.
Here we go. Perfect. Thank you. I have a couple of...
What's our rate for providing that service?
It's a beer, it's a beer when I see him at dinner. I'm happy to do it. And I'll start my comments briefly by saying, I think Supervisor Bennett, you're spot-on, only I disagree with you in your timing, because, you know, now's when everybody has to know it's reliable and can be relied on. And I would urge that it happen now, because I think it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. Because here you are with a lawyer from Cuyagus asking you to sign a document that contains recitals that are fundamental to disagreements and asserts Cuyagus's positions around the underlying dispute, not only what ultimately you may hear, but in litigation, lawyers write recitals in contracts for reasons. They use them in litigation and in administrative proceedings. And so they're asking you to buy onto their positions. And of course, my view would be, why wouldn't counsel for your board say, why are these recitals in there? They have nothing to do with what we're suggesting, which is, you're going to run models with the data we give you, and we'll pay you for extra stuff, and it has nothing to do with all of these other things. So recitals have unintended consequences in contracts, and this just lathers this up with more concern in my world, because Cuyagus is an adversary in the context of this litigation and as this is unfolding. The second thing I would raise with you is this issue about paying for litigation. Cuyagus is in the lawsuit. So their modeling's going to be in the lawsuit. The modeling they run for you is going to be in this lawsuit. It's all going to be in the lawsuit. Now, maybe it'll all get cooperatively solved as, based on adjudication, things happen, but it's going to be there. And this contract doesn't parse that out, and it doesn't deal with that. And everything that you tell Cuyagus to do is not segregated from Cuyagus protecting its position in the litigation. So if you or your lawyers, set aside the Nosman firm issue, which bothers me to no end, you or your lawyers are asking for modeling around trying to deal with things here or in the context of getting honest broker analysis, all of that will be transparent to a agency that may, is clearly contrary to a number of the stakeholders involved in this. So there's no walling around confidentiality. So you're buying into using someone who there is conflict intention with, which is a recipe for problems down the road, and it's only going to get exacerbated. And the last, the other comment is, there was a mention that Cuyagus is using a consultant. It's not clear to me that that's been transparently identified to everybody. Who are these people that Cuyagus is using as a consultant to run their modeling or otherwise involved? That's important for all these reasons that I'm discussing, because if you folks want to be the honest broker around how this is unfolding, and there are very knotty, compelling, competing disputes, the more you are aligned, and the more there are consultants, and we don't know who they are, and we don't know who they're talking to, and you don't have the ability to say, we're going to have a conversation with you, and we want it done this way because, and this is, and don't share it. And then you decide how you want to roll it out. You're losing that ability by doing this. And the last is, I would urge that if you even consider any of this, it's my understanding that DUDAC has a source code, but there's an awful lot of experts involved in this, and a lot of consultants, everybody's got their consultants and experts. And I would urge that the source code and the ability to run the modeling be made available to everybody involved in this. As an agency trying to be the honest broker to the world, and get all the data, and everybody can argue about what all this looks like, transparency is critical. And so I would urge that you require as part of these contracts that the, that the underlying algorithms and all of that, plus the source codes, be transparently available to everybody, so everybody can be running it all and taking a look at it, and we don't have the secrets of we know and you don't.
Dan Rosenthal, again, for the Water Rights Coalition. Cuyagus and United both have competing interests in the basin, the Las Poses basin, to the largest stakeholders in the water that is in the basin, which is the overlying water users. So how can you justify hiring them to do a model for you when their interests are contrary to the interests of the outliers, which are the dominant users in the basin? If you're going to do that, then pay for the outliers consultant to do a model and give us the source codes to start running this data. and give us the source codes to start running this data. It doesn't make any sense. If you're going to be the honest broker, if you're going to actually represent all the stakeholders in the basin, then you either don't do this or you have to do it for everybody. Models can be biased. Models are models. If you want to do this, then let us do this. It's not fair. And you're going to lose your credibility if you go down this road, in my opinion.
Stephanie Morris for CAGUS. I just wanted to clarify that CAGUS has not yet been served and is not yet answered in any way to the adjudication, so we are not part of that litigation. In fact, the model has been turned over to DUDAC for peer review. It also has been vetted through the tag, and that's the nice thing about models. It's a tool, and everyone can look at it and understand it, and it's the inputs that we disagree with. But that's the nice part about a tool is we can come together and collaborate around a tool. We may not agree what the inputs are, but it's important to have a common tool and to work together so that we can answer these questions, even if we don't necessarily agree. And the final thing I would add is that Intera is the consultant that CAGUS used, and that's been disclosed in the tag and publicly, so that information has been available for quite a while. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. I'm John Lindquist, United Water Conservation District. And I'm not going to try to sway you either way on this issue. I just wanted to provide a little background information that may be relevant to this current discussion. We started building our model in 2013. Before Sigma existed, we had no idea where this was going. We spent about 8,000 man-hours building that model. So it's not an easy thing for someone else to do. We're happy to turn over the source codes. Ultimately, the input files are going to be made available to everybody as required under Sigma. So it's not going to be an easy task to just build your own model or pick this up. It will certainly help however we can, if that's a decision you make. I'd also like to mention, if I hadn't already, that we spent about $200,000 on independent expert panel review. Now, we paid for those experts, but we never suggested to them that they sway their opinion one way or another. We spent at least $60,000 so far, which is equivalent to what we're asking for in reimbursement for the upcoming modeling. We've spent that already, working on GSP-related modeling that aligns with our existing, the background information. It aligns with what we would have done anyways. So the $60,000 we're asking is specifically for the model runs that you folks need run, and we just need some reimbursement so that we don't get in trouble with our general customer base. And we'd like to help. Okay, so and I already mentioned that my last note here is the source code for the model is available. That's Mod Flow, it's available to the public. And again, the input files, all the input's already out there in our report, our model documentation report. And of course, the files will be required under Sigma. Just wanted to provide that background.
Thank you, John. So the requested board action here is to authorize the executive officer to enter into an agreement with United, and CAGUS for the modeling is outlined in the presentation, correct?
That's correct, Chair.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Can I make a comment? I'd just like to make a comment and a question before we do that. First, my comment, the comments of the United representative here today, I think were about as professional as I've heard in this room in that you stepped up here, you said, "I'm not trying to sway you, and if you decide not to go with us, we'll help you." But you gave clarifying information, 8,000 hours to build this thing, why you were doing something. And that's the tone of collaboration that is essential for this kind of effort to go forward. So my compliments to that. My question for County Counsel, since the issue was raised about the recitals. Are there anything in those recitals that say anything more than CAGUS wants to make sure that it is acknowledged that they're disagreeing with the inputs?
No, the recitals merely state facts, which is that CAGUS has stated certain positions, and that's undeniable, so...
So are you comfortable with those recitals being in this? Do they cause any concern for you?
I did actually review them, yes.
What's that?
It was suggested that I did not review them, and I just wanted to assure you that I did and approved them.
And you're comfortable with them, right?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation in terms of...
You'll make the motion?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
That concludes item number two. There's no other business notice for this meeting. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.